Okay Chairman Lee, we're ready when you are.
At this time I will call the Parks and Community Events Commission meeting to order. May we have a roll call please?
Commissioner Curry. Commissioner Veriker.
Aye.
Commissioner Yerbro.
Here.
Vice Chair Marshall. Vice Chair Marshall?
He's muted.
Okay, I will...
Here.
Chairman Lee?
Present. Public comment is the opportunity for members of the public to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Please state your name and residence for the record. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak?
Chairman Lee, we did receive an email. He did not specify if it was for the parks or for the council, so I'm gonna go ahead and read it to you guys because it did mention the Parks Commission. It's from Robert Puentez. And it reads, "Good morning, Robert Puentez, your friendly Cathedral City Parks Advocate. I had a chance to look at the parks proposal and was presently surprised that many items were included, including dog parks, baseball, basketball improvements, tennis, and general park improvements. Also, while I hate losing a baseball diamond, I think the idea of a skate park at Century Park is a good idea. I have posted on local pages and there is a big response from citizens to help improve the parks through community service. I also offer my expertise to help any way I can. Thanks to the Parks Commission for compiling this list and I urge the city council members to approve some of these proposals to improve our parks at recognition services. Thank you, Robert Puentez."
Thank you, you were breaking up a little bit over here. I don't know if everybody else could hear, but anyway, I got the gist of the message.
And I will go ahead and email it to you guys as well.
Alright, thank you. Agenda finalization, are there any items on the agenda that need to be pulled or continued to a future meeting?
There are none.
Are there any urgency items that need to be added to the agenda?
There are none.
Moving to approval of the minutes, approval of the November 23rd, 2020 minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak on the item? Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Do we have a motion and a second? Calling for a motion, aye?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, Gary Marshall.
And somebody second?
I'll second it.
There you go. Could we have a roll call vote please?
Commissioner Veriker.
Aye.
Commissioner Yerbro.
I'll abstain, it wasn't there.
Vice Chair Marshall.
Yes.
Chairman Lee.
Yes. Motion passes. Moving on to the rest of our agenda. And I believe our first item on the agenda is Public Arts Commission update.
Mr. Chairman, I've invited Stone James to come and talk to us about the Public Arts Commission. And when they, and this will kind of be an update on what's going on, what they're looking at in the parks and expect to see him here if there's actually other proposals for the parks, so this is more of an introduction. And I'll let Stone, Director Stone James, who is our Economic Development Director as well, start his presentation right now, thank you.
Thank you, Director Corolla. And so am going to, if it's okay, well, before I jump into my presentation, just give your introduction. So as John mentioned, my name is Stone James and I am the Director of Economic Development for the city. And I've had the pleasure of serving the city for the last, since 2017. I take a lot of pride in it. Most recently, as of July of last year, 2020, I joined the role of the staff liaison for the Public Arts Commission. And it has been, they are a great group of people to work with. Actually, also as of July 1st, a substantially new group of individuals. And they come from a variety of backgrounds. They've got a lot of very good ideas, they've got a great experience base, and they're really looking to make positive changes in the community. So I can genuinely say I'm appreciative of the opportunity to serve that team. And so, so interesting is, is that I feel like economic development and public arts, they are, they have a synergistic role. Public art is not necessarily economic development, however, public art really helps with community and the better we make the community, the place this Cathedral City is for people to come and live, work, and play, that is going to help on the development side. And so with that, Director Corolla had asked for me to keep this short. I prepared just a very brief presentation for all of you. And if I may, I will pull that up on my screen now. Want to see this PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Yes. Again, could you check your audio though, it's in and out?
No, no problem. I'll, I'll speak up, hopefully that will help. And then in terms of the stability of my internet connection, that's a great question. I, I can't really speak to that right now. I stereotypically have problems with the stability of my internet connection. And so hopefully a louder voice, and I'm happy to repeat, that's not an issue at all. So the, the Public Arts Commission is really looking to accomplish as much as they can. There are some constraints with that. Understandably, there are budgetary constraints. And then there's also a constraint of staff time. Since I am such a believer in the public arts, I'm doing my best to, with, to help the, the Public Arts Commission come up with ways to have meaningful impact within our community, but do something that minimizes demands on staff. So how can they still have, make meaningful contributions, but at the same time, given the cutbacks of COVID-19 in June, and then given the tremendously increased workload that COVID-19 has brought on, I'll certainly speak for my department, but I know for a variety of departments, really try to manage those demands. You know, good results with not breaking the back of staff. When I say staff, there are multiple departments that are involved when we try to get a project approved. It's not just me working on staff reports and doing all of the research and, and all of those things. But when we get something approved, or even if we're trying to evaluate a project, that's going to involve other departments like facilities. And so that is the sensitivity that we've got facility works, is not trying to burden those departments. Because we'll take facilities, facilities for example. That's three gentlemen, motivated, technically competent, you know, good, good people, hardworking. But those three people are responsible for a police department, three fire stations, and all of them. So they have just an incredible workload. So anyways, one of the things that we have looked at as the Public Arts Commission is, what can we do to the city, where can we infuse art into the fabric of the city? The easiest way is to do that is of course on city property. And so when we take a look at, well, what are the city-owned assets? There are not too many. There certainly is our downtown. And I think that downtown has been the focus of the Public Arts Commission for at least the last five or six years prior to July 1 of 2020. And so they've accomplished a lot within that downtown. But our city is not the downtown. Our city has assets and homes and residents throughout the whole thing. So one of the things the Public Arts Commission identified was, hey, we've got these fantastic parks. Is there a way to support those parks, their mission, and enhance those parks through public, utilize the public arts expertise and funding and enhance those parks? And so there was a project that was recently being contemplated in the downtown. And it was through the leadership of the public arts and through the leadership of the mayor that it was suggested, hey, take a look at the parks and specifically Panorama Park. So back in probably third quarter of 2020, the Passages artwork was approved by council. The Passages is the tall art with the beautiful blue sky in the background. That was particularly meaningful to me. And, excuse me. And I think the public arts. That really is a tribute to the first responders within our community. Both our police department, we've had two people, two servants killed in the light of duty by fire department, who's had one person who's died in the light of duty or as a result of an on-duty incident. And then all of the first responders that currently live in our city and who have responded to many things over their career, but particularly COVID. This passage was really representative of life's passages and the trials and tribulations. And I say it's particularly meaningful for me because this is my 19th, I'm going into my 20th year as a reserve for a Southern California Sheriff's Department. And so we presented this to council and council approved it. And that's called "The Passages" by Steve Shigley. And then most recently, there was a piece of art called "Swiss Cheese." And this, this artwork, Swiss Cheese, people had been enjoying Swiss Cheese in our downtown for, since 2014. And it was located right across from the, the main water fountain there. Now, right in front of the police department, really the police department building. You would never know it was a police department unless you looked and really identified what that trailer is above the art piece. So that was there for about four years. Ultimately, when the memorial to commemorate Officer Jerome's death was dedicated, Swiss Cheese was put into storage. And unfortunately, since 2018, despite attempts by the Public Arts Commission to place Swiss Cheese in different parts of the city, every time for some reason or another, that failed. And so most recently, in conversations with the Public Arts Commission, the mayor, and some of the council members, they thought placing Swiss Cheese up on the northern northwest corner of Panorama Park would be a great place to enrich the park, take an asset that is a very expensive piece of art out of storage, and place it in a place where the public can enjoy. And so Steve Shigley, we talked about it briefly. You know, here, here it is, honor the sacrifices of law enforcement and first responders. This is tubular steel with the concrete base. This is something that I think it's got significant longevity. There it is, up close and personal, this is up. He was a high desert artist. This is one of the pieces that he fabricated. And then here is the base that was built back in December on the northeast corner of Panorama Park. There will be uplighting and that's going to be tied to the lighting of the park. So this is, in my opinion, really going to enhance the asset, that, that park. It's about nine, maybe a little bit taller due to that base. That base was elevated, so if a car were ever run up, like below the intersection and jump the curb, the car would come to a stop at the base and would not take out the piece of art. So here most recently is the Swiss Cheese. This is the location that council approved last council meeting. This would be mounted at a 45-degree angle pursuant to the guidance and the direction of Director Corolla. He had taken into consideration, you know, view corridors for people turning left from Peldora onto Calidada Street. And then also focused on Calidada Street making a right turn onto Peldora. So I appreciated Director Corolla's guidance and professional, professional opinion there. This was the place where a tree had been planted and died. And, you know, this, this... So here are some of the specifics. Just out the, the Swiss Cheese itself, again, it was originally donated by the Simi Dava and his wife back in 2014. And there will be no lighting on this just because the collective, everyone involved did not believe that lighting was going to be necessary. And also, it's just remarkable how expensive lighting can be. And in terms of, here is the actual piece of art. It's a pretty big piece, over eight feet tall, eight feet wide. I've been told it's about a thousand pounds. I haven't tried picking it up. It seems a lot, but, you know, I'm gonna take their word for it. So in terms of future art projects, that's one of the things that the Public Arts Commission has really been focused on is, again, getting back to, how do we, how, how does the Public Arts Commission enhance the community? Make it a more enjoyable place, a more interesting place? And so one of the things that was noted was some of the conditions of the benches and some of the parks, or some of the benches within the library. And so the thought was, hey, wait a minute. Sorry, that was Siri interrupting us. So the thought was, how can we, you know, how, how can we, what can the Public Arts Commission do that will fulfill their mission, give them solid accomplishments that will improve the community, that will not tremendously burden staff until we can get out from under this COVID burden? Do, accomplish good things? So we're contemplating, you know, we've taken a look at some of the art benches or some of the, some of the benches. Is that something that, that you folks would appreciate? We're taking a look at the library. And so with that, I will bring this to an end. That might have gone slightly more than what Director Corolla had asked, but I hope this helps.
Thank you, Stone, that, that is a good presentation and some of the commissioners may actually not be familiar with the newest piece that was approved this week. I'm really pleased to see you here. The Parks Commission has discussed Passages and other artworks at past meetings. So I do encourage this communication between the two commissions. I, I was, I was pleased that the city council reflected that at their meeting on Wednesday. Not that the, the Parks Commission has any particular input into the, the type of artwork, but when it's being placed in a park, I think it's appropriate that we should at least have some input on the planning of that. And I, I have no problem with either of these artworks. I think they're, they're both very beneficial. But I do hope that we can improve our communication lines in both directions. You know, you mentioned that recreation is an important economic principle. And indeed, part of that is the provision of parks and community events, which is what we're very focused on. So while the art is, is one aspect of that, we need to remember that parks, recreation, and, and just generally the maintenance of our housing areas, they're all playing into that same thing. We want a beautiful space for people to reside and relax. So anyway, I appreciate it. I don't know if the other commissioners have any questions?
I do, Stone, if you don't mind.
Sure, yeah, please, go ahead.
Just a curious, curiosity question, I, you know, I'm not sure you're aware, but we're talking about a dog run on the northeast corner of the Panorama Park. This, this surely piece would not affect that, I'm sure. I'm sure John's thought about that.
No, there's no conflict in that location.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Just to, just to further extend on Swiss Cheese, there was some discussion about the placement of that artwork in a park. And I think the consensus on Wednesday night, and Stone can correct me, is that it is almost inevitably going to turn into some kind of climbing frame, but it's far enough away from the Jungle Gym and, and other locations that there won't be that many unsupervised children climbing on it. My, my concern was only looking at it, it seems to have a very large point on top. So I was worried about skewering children, but, but everyone tells me that's not gonna happen, so that's good.
Certainly, certainly hope not, that would make for a curious headline. Swiss Cheese kills them. Yeah, so, and that was one of the things that I had talked to the risk mitigation, Tammy Scott, who is, I don't know if you've ever had an opportunity to work with her, but she is, she is a fantastic asset to the city. She is the Director of Administrative Services, which is many things. And one of the things that she handles is the risk mitigation. And so in talking to her, in the four years, in our discussion produced that, in the four years that it was in City Hall, you know, very close to that, that, that I, I did a, did a, you know, little Google analysis and it was about 125 feet away from the fountain itself. And so thankfully, as a city, they'd never had any claims. And that has been remarkable to see just how many claims this city receives on an annual basis. And so Chairman Lee, I, I too share your concern and would not want to see any kids hurt. My hope is, is that with this is maybe 600 or 700 feet away from play area, not be a magnet for kids, you know, trying to remove themselves from the gym currently. And so then also one other thing too is, in terms of your work and the, and the role of, of parks in the community, I think it's helpful and so I'm very grateful for it. And I mean that, well, number one sincerely as a person who, you know, works out very frequently. But also to look at the incidence of type 2 diabetes and of child obesity, it is truly at an epidemic level. And I say that having a medical background, slight medical background is important. And so, you know, types of parks, in fact, I believe that the city is underparked. And I'd love to see additional parks installed in the city. Bit of a loss on where we can do that, but the, the people parks, or even, even if it's a dog park, those wonderful places for people to connect, especially people who might be socially isolated, go to a loss of a spouse or something. But anyway, so I genuinely appreciate what you folks do. And with that, I don't want to take any more. So if there's any other questions, I'll answer them and if not, I will wish you a productive meeting. Anything else? Going once?
Thanks, you have one. Just a quick one, are you, will the commission move to the other parks after these, these are completed at Panorama? Any plans?
Sure, if you just, if you don't mind giving me a few more minutes on that. So in discussions with Councilmember Carnavale, he had talked about the Century Park. And, and then even Panorama Park, quite candidly, because one of the thoughts that could be done is the painting of utility boxes. And that really is kind of years reversal throughout the city because we have a number of those large gray traffic signal control boxes. And I know that's something that John, that's near, near John's heart. Our commission has been chomping at the bit to either wrap it or paint it. But right now they're going through a lot of, a lot of changes. So we can't really go with those traffic signal boxes. So the conversation has shifted is, can we do something on the boxes that are at the parks? And so there's a couple of boxes at both of the parks. And then also at Century Park, Councilmember Carnavale had suggested, hey, is there a way for you to bring that park? And so there's, there are a couple of things that the Art Commission would be happy to share with you. Preliminary, and it's, I don't want to say been put on ice due to demands of the staff. We've recently approved, we have to let that work through the system and let facilities get it installed and give them a little breathing room. But once that's done, it would be great to be able to back up to you. And one of them was potentially putting, if you can picture, if you have in your mind's eye Century Park and if you have a baseball diamond on the southeast corner of the park. If you can picture that baseball diamond between that chain link fence and the actual corner of DeBald and Century Park Boulevard, I believe is the road name. You know, could that be a location? And, and I'd love for you folks to opine, obviously, once you've had, think about it and digest it and discuss it. And then another one, another, yep, is what about that giant wall that surrounds, at least the western side, that surrounds that retention basin? That's a significant wall, it's significantly, apparently it's been the target of graffiti over the years. Is that something that potentially could have a mural that really speaks to the fabric? But that's something that would be a lot more involved because that would require pulling some of the, you know, you can't have the overspray of water hitting it. So that means there's going to need to be like a DG decomposed granite buffer between where the grass stops and then the wall so that the overspray has a chance to fall and not impact the wall. I mean, there's just a whole bunch of things that are involved in that. But, but right now there's, you know, aside from those two thoughts of, you know, what can the Art Commission support? The parks and ultimately your mission? If, you know, since you are intimately involved in, if you have ideas, please send them our way.
I think there's, I think there's something more that you need to do. I, I looked at all the parks and particularly went to see where Swiss Cheese would be put. I think it is safe, Danny, because I, I examined it from both ends. But there are a lot of spaces around the city that are vacant. We don't know as we go around our lives whether they're of any use. Who controls it? What vacant spaces are there that we could use for, for parks or, or art? And every time I look at them, I go, how do I find out? So I think that's an inventory, a real inventory for us. Because parks don't have to be huge. Go to New York and see where they put parks.
Little pocket parks. So Commissioner Curry, that's, that's actually an excellent idea. And that's one of the things that staff, you know, candidly frustrating for staff, or I'll speak with my, for myself and Tammy, because I believe that art is a wonderful addition to a community and it makes it a much richer place. And so we would like to see a lot more art, going meaningful art. I'm not talking about sacrificing quality. I, I don't think those are, that's not what I'm talking about. Getting good art placed in the community, we would certainly be doing more of that. One of the things that's been a little frustrating for us is we have been intending to create an inventory of all city assets. And that is, we have, that has taken more time than we have wished. And that is something that the public arts asked for. And that's something that we're working on. Due to the disposition of city assets over the last probably 10 years, really the core of the city assets are the three fire departments, the downtown civic center, and parks. Got a couple of parcels way up on the north side by the railroad that are just sand. But I want to say that, oh, and then also center medians. Those are typically all owned by the city. But beyond that, there, there's not really very many city other assets that I'm aware of. Which is, kind of compounds the frustration in terms of where can we put more dog parks? Or where, where can be put more active parks or passive parks? So, because that literally was just discussed by someone last, I was actually talking about it with the Director of Planning on Friday when we went out to take a look at a facility to recruit significant business into our community. We had actually a long conversation of just about parks and the fact that we're underparked in the city. So anyway, I don't want to be hung by John.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I have one thing, I served on the Arts Commission when we did buy Swiss Cheese. So I'm glad that you're using it. I also, because Deanna would remember this, I also very much like the fact that you're getting outside of the Cove area. No offense to Cove residents, but there's too much stuff downtown. Where I relive in the Dream Homes area, we're lucky if we get a popsicle on a stick sometimes. So I think it's really nice that the Arts Commission is looking at that. By the way, there was an inventory done less than six years ago. I know because I was there when we did it. So that, I don't think that much has changed in the last six years as far as pieces of art are concerned. So I remember when that was done. So I don't know if you guys still have access to that, but I think it's a great idea what you guys are doing. And as long as we spread the love and get the artwork around the city and not just in front of City Hall, I think you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you, I, I appreciate those sentiments because that, that genuinely is the mission. And that, that Swiss Cheese was originally slated for Officer Vasquez Boulevard, right there on the southeast corner of Cat Canyon. And Officer Vasquez by the parking structure. And ultimately, you know, the powers that be appropriately felt, hey, you're gonna get, it's just gonna be a better place up in Panorama. So I appreciate that and actually that is on one of our goals. The Public Arts Commission is going to be presenting some goals that they've come up with through 2025 to the city council here at the next city council meeting. to the city council here at the, the next city council meeting. And that is one of the goals. Uh, 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 how do you spell, I forgot your last name. Hey, Richter?
Veraker.
Veraker? Okay, Veraker. Um, so Commissioner Veraker is, and that is one of the goals is to up into Dream Homes because Dream Homes has had such a significant improvement over the last probably five years. And so anyway, your, your thoughts, your ideas, you're part of the community, you're part of the commission. If you've got something interesting or creative, uh, you, I'm always available.
Okay, good, good. Very good.
Thank you everyone. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Um, okay, moving on to our next agenda item, budget priorities for fiscal year.
Chairman Lee, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, do you have members that wish to speak?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and we have Rebecca Navari. I'm going to go ahead and allow her to talk. She has her, her hand raised.
And is, sorry Christina, is this on, is this a general comment or is this on, on Stone's comments?
Um, she raised her hand during this item, so we'll go ahead. Allow her to talk. Okay, we're just waiting for her to join us as a panelist. And there she is. Okay, Ms. Navari, can you hear us?
I can hear you. I'm going to start video. I just, you know, just blanked out there for a minute. I wanted to ask Mr. Stone, well, I wanted to suggest that landscape is an art. And my first view of the panorama overview there was it's so dreary, it's so drab. I had one little idea coming up, just, you know, what would be inexpensive? What can we do with no budget of, because of the, um, pandemic? And what if there were cutouts along those, you know, the grass isn't looking too happy? And, uh, cutouts along the walkways and install native plants, native grasses. That would be good for habitat. It'd be much more inviting and compelling for kids to want to run around in there. Because right now it looks kind of like the place needs trees and I'm so happy about the art coming up. That's beautiful. And, um, I love all the ideas that have been coming up here so far, but I'm thinking the landscape itself needs a little pumping up and we could do it on a low budget, you know? If we did some number crunching. So that's my idea on that situation. That's just one comment for me. Do we have the money to do little things like that?
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to answer or would you like to answer?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry. I was looking at the papers I've got here. Um, yeah, uh, John, if you want to address that.
Um, ob, uh, Ms. Navar, Mrs. Navar, we would, we are, we do want the city looking and its parks looking good. Our challenge this past year has been that the COVID cutbacks, not only with staff, but in funding. So hopefully, uh, when we go through this next budget cycle for the upcoming year, uh, the city council may deem that we do have available funds to be able to apply to our parks, but we have been on a shoestring. And we warned, forewarned everyone that the parks, uh, especially the watering and uh, would be cut back to basically the bare minimum. Uh, we have been making those savings that we needed to accomplish. So kudos to our public works, uh, department, uh, Deanna and her crews that work on the parks. Um, in addition to the, and on really a shoestring, uh, staffing too as well. So, um, that's kind of where we're at. And hopefully we'll get to reseeding parks next year too. As you noticed, we did not receive any of the parks this year.
Thanks, John. Okay, so, um, are there any other comments? Christina?
There are none. I see none at this time.
Okay, thank you. Um, next agenda item is budget priorities for fiscal year 2122. It's actually really the, the budget cycle is for two years in fact, so. Um, this was, uh, brought forward from our previous meeting. Um, where we had the structure for the budget and what we needed to do was to get some cost estimates included. Um, there were some minor corrections, which I've incorporated, um, to the previous um, document. And those mostly related to pickleball. Um, so what I, uh, what I'd like to do is go through the, the, uh, paper one more time and I'll just remind you of the process here. So, um, the city council will be meeting at the end of this month. Uh, in order to, uh, start their goal setting and also that will kick off their budget cycle planning. So we want to get these numbers to them for that, uh, for that meeting. And, uh, so what we're doing here is, is putting our best estimates forward. We understand that, um, these are just ideas that, that, um, we've received either from within the commission or from feedback from the public. But as it mentions in this document, there are many steps in between being here and actually implementing, um, some of these major improvements. And some would require study with the, the local, um, residents. Um, with public meetings and so on. So just bear that in mind as we look at this. Um, we have, we had, uh, originally there, there were two sets of estimates in here and I've left some of that information in here. Um, I'll just explain what's going on. So, uh, the commission had pulled together some estimates which were from public, um, information from other, uh, local communities. So San Diego and, uh, San Francisco, for example. And, um, the city, uh, was able to come up with some additional estimates which are now incorporated into this document. And so you'll have seen that some things changed, um, quite a lot. Um, that's because it's based on, on local knowledge here. So John can speak to the individual items as we get to them. But, um, where we may have had one estimate, um, just comparing the costs from other cities. Um, Cathedral City will have its own specific needs and, um, and costs. Uh, so in presenting this going forward, we're relying on those city estimates. Okay, I'll, I'll take it in parts so that we'll see what comments there are. Um, the first part of this is deferred maintenance. And this is where things need to be repaired or upgraded. Any, uh, any discussion on this first section?
Danny?
Yes, Fergus?
I, as we're thinking of, of fencing, can we add into that the possibility of colored fencing? Because we're talking about making things far less drag. And I noticed in a couple of parks, we have some fencing that is, is colored. Yellow or I said yellow and a green in my rounds. Uh, but it seems to me that if it's not measurably more expensive, that might be another way to get parks more interesting to even look at and, and inviting.
So, um, that would be a consideration after the budget, um, goes through. Uh, in the implementation plans for these different projects. So, yeah, I like the idea of adding more color and, uh, more variety. But, um, at the moment, we're really just looking at the, the basic estimates for these items. I think when we come back around to it, when the city says, sure, you can have this money for the dog park. Then we can get into the discussion of exactly how that's going to look.
And if I may, if I may interject, Mr. Chairman, uh, what Commissioner Curry is stating should be put in now. Because I've been in public service a long time and once you present a cost, you're expected to live with that. Colored fencing adds 20 to 30% more. It is very expensive. And so we would want to add that now if that's the desire of the commission.
Well, um, my view would be not to do that at this point, since we have gone through this planning already. Um, but it's up to the rest of the commission to also decide what they want to do. I, my concern is only that we may have to delay this to the point where we can't get it to them for the budget cycle. And then we don't get that information to the city, to the council.
Mr. Chairman, I would, if you're making a motion, I would second it not to have the color fencing at this point.
Yeah, I don't think we need motions, but, but I, 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 I appreciate the, the comments, so, um. Sim, what, what do you think?
I think that since, well, let's talk to, uh, John first. John, there's these items that we're costing out. Are, are these items going to actually be acted on in this budget cycle or not?
That's not up to me.
I understand that, but is it going to, to these, what we're doing right now by going through this budget, does it go to the city council for approval or I'm, I'm not sure of the process here. It looks like we're, okay.
Let me take that one, John. So, so here, here's the process. Sim, we advise the council, we don't have any budgetary authorities, so.
Yeah, I understand that, uh, Chairman Chairman.
So then if we're advising anything, it goes to the city council for approval. So this is going, as I say, to their meeting at the end of the month, which is the planning meeting.
I understand that.
Okay, so I'm not understanding your point.
Okay, my point is then let's put down for colored fencing and without colored fencing and let them make the decision. I mean, basically if we say, John has a point, that if we say we want only gray fencing, then that's what they're going to put in. Then by, by not putting in the colored fencing option, you were saying no to it. So that's what we need to be clear on. Cause they're not going to come back and say to us, or I'd be very surprised if they came back and said, we're going to give you an extra 25 grand now to color the fences. So I think that that's what, that's what we're talking about. And if it's 20% more and we can't afford it, that's fine. But I think that's where the decision has to be made now. Do we ask for colored fencing or give them another option with colored fencing or not? And it also doesn't have to be all or nothing. If we decide we want to try a colored fencing, maybe we try it in one of the smaller parks and see if it, if it works, if it's, if it's worth anything. It may be just, I like color. I, I, I like things bright.
You can't budget that way. Really, you have to make that decision now.
Yeah, this is my point. We, we can't have sort of woolly thinking about it. If, if you want to change these numbers, you're going to have to tell me what the numbers need to be because we will have to make those decisions tonight. Because this, we're not going to have another meeting where this commission can make a decision between now and when they go to discuss this. So
All right, okay.
In which case we can go line by line, but we're going to have to revise these budgets. I don't know how confident I am that we can do that in this meeting. But by all means, I'm, I'm willing to give it a shot.
Danny, I, I think if you took a consensus of our commission, we would decide just to move on. That's the impression I get.
Um, okay, well.
Uh, I do have another question on, uh, farther down in the list, if I could, when you're done with.
Okay, well, let, let me just clarify that. So, so Gary and, and Chip, you're in favor of just leaving it as is? Was that my understanding?
Yeah, I, I, this is, um, this is Chip. I, I so I understand, um, the desire for colored fencing, but you know, I, I, I really, I, I mean, I tend to be a realist and I think that we're, we're already pushing the, um, the envelope by this $4 million in what we would like to see at the end of the day. And I just, I, I don't see what color fencing would add other than it to be colorful.
Well. Okay, um, I, I, I think Gary is correct. There's three of us that, that prefer to leave it as it is right now. So I think we can move on. Um, other comments?
So, uh, this is Chip and I, uh, actually Gary, you were first. I'm sorry.
Well, that's okay, Chip. Uh, yeah, I just a quick one. Uh, the panorama, uh, the, uh, raking of the field at Panorama, I was curious why we didn't put in Ocotillo as well?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part, Gary.
Uh, the, the raking of the field at Panorama. I was curious why we didn't do the baseball field at Ocotillo. Uh, and I'm sorry I didn't notice that last meeting, but I was just curious if that, uh, should be added on there.
John? Now, what we're, what we were talking about on raking the field at Panorama was and there's a couple cleanup items on this item. And, uh, one is we were going to cut out the true rounded and we are, I already discussed this with staff, cut out the true rounded infield look at Panorama. This also provided for bringing in some, uh, uh, DG, um, and or dirt in there and repairing the fencing, the bleachers and the, um, dugout areas. Uh, what I want to basically talk about is, um, we won't be adding bases. Uh, because, um, I've explained, I think I've explained this before is we don't put pitchers' mounds as at Ocotillo or bases out because every single league has a different length of bases and pitching mounds. And leagues are very familiar with bringing their own bases and their own pitching mounds out. So, um, we excluded the adding bases, but we did look at actually putting in uh, a different, you know, some adding some dirt and really sprucing up that infield. Ocotillo, on the other hand, when it was installed, it has what you call Dodger dirt on it. It has a clay infield. So that's like minimal raking that we do on our part and that's been pretty much maintained.
Yeah, so it's not essential, it's not needed at Ocotillo is what you're saying.
Right.
Correct, yes.
Thanks, John. Thank you.
That's good.
I, I have a follow-up question regarding that, the raking. So, um, I don't know if you've been following it on Facebook, but, um, John, was it us that raked Panorama Park recently or was that a resident who went and did it?
I don't know if anyone that raked at, uh, city staff went out there and just raked and cleaned up a little bit of it, but I've already directed, uh, and Deanna Pressgro was in that meeting too. We're going to clean it up even more sands. Bringing in some additional DG or dirt to spruce it up and repairing the fencing. So we're going to do that already. But the bringing in the dirt and the repairing the fences and repairing anything out there is what really drove up the cost.
So, what, um, so, um, also, you know, following the, the, the people who are, um, uh, interested in, in upgrading, uh, Panorama Park, which I, I'm all for. But it's, it's private citizens talking about doing this. What, what is the city's stance on that?
A lot of these organized activities would have to come under the city. There is some risk management issues. Unfortunately, it's not the world we had 20 years ago and uh, you know, it was easy to get a group together and help fix things. So, uh, that just has to be coordinated through the city and, uh, make sure that the liabilities are covered. If there's that impetus to get it done and making the assurance that it gets done too as well.
Um, and one last question. Um, and that's, uh, the security gates on the public restrooms, Century, Panorama and Dennis Keating. Uh, that 150,000 seems awfully expensive for, for door fencing. Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
Well, what you're talking about is at Century, you got two doors. Panorama, two doors. Dennis Keat, two doors. The challenge is these parks were not set up with actual doors. Uh, Dennis Keats does have a version of door to make it automatic. Uh, we'd have to run the electricity and have time locks such as that Ocotillo, we, I'll just We, I'll just give you a brief update on Ocotillo. We had manual locking doors, and since we don't have a crew or anyone at night that goes and locks these doors, uh, we put automatic time locks on them, which were, um, an after the fact expense that we had to incur. Panorama Century don't even have doors. So we're talking about, uh, not necessarily doors, as people would think. We're talking about putting cages or at least tubular steel fencing with automatic time locks. Uh, we didn't go out and garner estimates, but when you multiply everything by basically six, uh, you divide that out and you're about 25, 30,000 each park, uh, just to get that done. So what we did was make sure these estimates were conservative, but not high, because once again, we, we've been in this business a long time and we know coming back after the fact, and if you're under budget, it's a painful process.
Right, are we, um, are we seeing like an uptick of, um, of vandalism or, uh, what are, what are we trying to block out here?
Um, what, what you usually do is at nighttime, uh, and this isn't foolproof, is, um, make sure the areas are secure at night, because typically for a homeless or a vagrant, this is a great space, a place to spend the night. Even at Ocotillo with the time locks, they get in there before the time lock, they'll let it lock out and they'll spend the night in there. And they'll do whatever they need to do. Sometimes it's fairly innocent, they're just looking for a place to sleep and wash up and clean up. Other times, we open the doors in the morning and the whole place is vandalized with graffiti. So this is another step in that direction. I might add, just so you know, that due to the STVRs, when the patrol officers are not actively enforcing the STVRs, we're not letting them have any downtime, they do have a checklist of places they can go, uh, to make sure that, um, we're making sure the restrooms are cleared right now in Panorama and Century, uh, that the restrooms are cleared and just patrolling areas, so. And that has helped substantially.
Stephen, I, you were trying to get in on this conversation.
Yeah, the only thing I would add, uh, Mr. Chairman and John, the repair, renew signage, the park entrance things, there's no mention of the signs being bilingual, and I believe we have discussed that before. And if we are gonna do that, the new signs, I would like that somewhere to be noted, that we would like to put them in English and Spanish.
Yeah, there, and let me make some clarifications there, that's why that cost is high, because we doubled everything. Uh, repaired and renewed signage, um, including park entrance sign. Park entrance signage is basically the monument signs that need some attention.
Right.
The Cathedral City Municipal Code signage is really Commissioner Verica, what you're really referring to, and that's where we get into the either double the amount of signs or we figure out to make one sign with everything on it, uh, top and bottom or bottom and side to side that are bilingual, so yeah. We accounted for that, so if someone wants to note that.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll update the description, Steve, to include that.
Okay, thanks.
And, uh, we'll just note, if this is approved, that it's with that amendment.
Miss, uh, Mr. Chairman, will you, will you be presenting this to the council at the end of the month, or is John going to do that?
No, I, I, we were actually submitting, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
It will, uh, it will be submitted to, um, the city through, uh, Charlie, through the city manager, and it becomes part of their, um, agenda packet. So this is their planning meeting, so I won't be presenting any. Okay, any further comments on the deferred maintenance part of this, we'll move on to small event. So, anything here, this would mostly affect, I guess, um, um, Gary and Chip, since they are the small events team. Nothing?
I haven't really noticed anything, uh, out of line with it. Danny, I, uh, certainly this is something we can work with.
Good.
That's great.
And I might add, the canopies are available from other departments, uh, even the police and fire department. Uh, I know Chris Parman in the community events has canopies too as well. They can be secured. And then the stage risers for performers or presenters, Indiana, chime in here. Is this the item, is this something where you typically rent, Indiana, or is this something that we've actually owned?
Sorry, I couldn't find the mute button. The, um, the risers are ones that we, um, typically have borrowed from Cathedral City High School.
Yeah, so I, I, I would, I would just leave it in, because it is something that if the city purchases, it can be used for other events as well. Similarly with the canopies, you know, during the summer in particular, there's a lot going on, so, um, having additional items is probably, um, is probably useful. Anything else on that, or we'll move on to?
And, uh, but if I may add, Commissioners, one thing, when you purchase items, you gotta address storage. And the city is very lacking in storage, so you gotta have some ideas, if that question's ever asked, where we're gonna put these.
We'll, we'll be inventive in the case where we're asked about the storage.
Okay.
Is there no storage space in the stage house itself?
No, none, none, none for this, that, that is filled with, uh, audio visual equipment right now. The one small room, and I might add that even the Snow Fest, uh, panels that have traditionally been used during Christmas time, we, that's actually a rented, those are, we rent storage space to store those, and that's in that budget for that, that the Public Arts Commission pays for. So it's not a daunting task, it's just something that you could think of.
Okay.
I have a quick, I have a quick question, Gary, for John. Uh, I, I have a thought for Chris Parman, but are there items that you would be able to have access to, as far as sound equipment? That type of thing, that you guys have some of those things?
Yeah, there, anything, you gotta remember though, that anything at the amphitheater cannot leave the site per the grants of which they were purchased.
Ah.
So physically, no one can go in there and borrow it and take it to a park, that's against the grant rules. They were specific, um, in that, and they have covenants on that. So what was purchased for the amphitheater stays with the amphitheater.
Ah, okay.
But on the other note, there are some items that we, city has, that Chris Parman utilizes, speakers, small speakers, and, um, that can be, uh, scheduled and coordinated for events. Remember, you, you are the Parks and Community Events Commission, so you have access to those with proper timing, notification and coordination.
John, do we have an inventory of those items?
Uh, no, but we can ask, uh, Chris Parman what he has that's available for, uh, sharing with the, um, with the commission.
Thank you.
Okay, um, moving on to the major project section.
And you can tell me when the scroll, Mr. Chairman, when we get there?
I thought it was just Magic, John, I didn't realize it was you.
No, I'm, I'm manually scrolling in here, but that's good, because we can hit each item.
Yeah, so, um, dog park then, um, that was pretty much how we discussed at the last meeting, the, the, um, as I said there, although you will see, because there is a, a set of references at the end of this document, which is where some of the original information was found. The city estimate is based on the reality of what's happening in our city. So we are basing it on the city estimate, so. Um, I, I've seen those discussions online, like this is really expensive or whatever, and you could do this for $10,000 or whatever. But, but I'm pointing out here that although you could find those lower estimates, say from, well, one, one in particular was the San Francisco estimates for their dog parks. But, um, this is based on, um, the knowledge that John has of the local area, so. Any comments on dog parks?
John, John, if we were to go to the temporary, because actually we have two dog parks listed here, one permanent, one temporary, is there a time period for the temporary?
Um, I'll just express there's a little appetite to put that up in the Panorama Park. Uh, we're not necessarily putting up low-grade construction, cheesy fencing, so to speak. And also not putting tubular steel, but we were, we are providing an estimate for at least fencing with post and top bars, because, uh, let's all, um, take a reality check. I don't see this thing, I don't see if we actually did anything out there, I don't see it being removed, so.
All right, okay, that's all I'm asking, and how long would you think this would take for Panorama?
Uh, it depends on when it's budgeted and where it fits into the program for us to get it done. Uh, remember, if anything, this is being contemplated, this is your wish list. For the 2020, oh, 21, 22, 23, 24 budget, we do the biennial budget. And so, uh, if it makes that list, then it becomes the appetite of the city council.
All right, because you understand the purpose of my question here, is because we're proposing two different dog parks, one temporary, one permanent.
Yes, and, uh, if I may, uh, expound on your second item B, uh, that dog park, the, here's the challenge, and here's why I put the bigger numbers up, and I'm getting pushback from some people that say it doesn't cost that much. That is, right now, up in the Cove, on C Street, there is available property there that lends itself economically, because it has a parking lot next to it and front of streets that can be parked on. The challenge with grants are, they tend to be a one-shot deal. And if you got, if you went for a smaller, lesser park somewhere, or even in that location, if you came back to expand it or make it bigger, the, the rationale from the grant reviewers is, you already got your grant, don't be coming back to us for more, you want bigger or better, so.
Right, right.
I've learned this lesson over the years, and so I'm throwing a high number there, it may not be that much. We haven't applied a whole lot of energy and attention to garnering an estimate, because that does cost money. So until we really see a grant coming in that's worthwhile, uh, that one's probably gonna be off in a few years. Um, remember, our attention right now, Commissioner Verica, is for the, um, uh, park in the Dream Homes area, that's where we're really focused.
I, I understand that, but I just wanna take a little pulse of the commission about, I love the fact that Panorama, I think that's fantastic. And I, I don't know if we're pushing one park at the Cove and then one park in Panorama, you know, I don't know whether that's a great idea or not, maybe we should just stick with the temporary park, because we do wanna be realistic, you know, and not, as Mr. Commissioner Yarborough stated, and put down $3 million for a dog park in the Cove, but we're also looking for money in another location.
And I think, uh, you have a good, a good, uh, comment there, and Mr. Chairman, knowing that this is gonna need the, there's no way, that's bigger than my paving budget. Um, we could put in there, uh, as bait, uh, two to five, 2.5 to 3 million, just add the words, uh, grant-based, um, grant-based project underneath it, so that everyone knows that, you know, we're working, uh, we're looking at grants for that, that's, there's no way the general fund could, uh, support that.
Um, just, uh, while we're on dog parks, so I got some new information today, and it won't be new to John, but it will be new to the rest of the commission. So at the, um, at your corner meeting today, um, that, um, subject as usual came up. And there were a couple of interesting updates from the mayor and from council member, um, Ross. And they were talking about the fact that we probably need more than one dog park. And, um, they were also talking about the potential for using what's left of Second Street Park as a dog park. So I think they're moving away from the idea of using that C Street lot anyway. Um, they, they seem to be talking, and, and they, they don't have a plan, they were just talking in general terms. So they have not made any decisions, I don't wanna suggest that they have. But they talked about Second Street as being one, um, option, um, as a dog park and, and something else, um, further north, so that we had two parks, as, um, as council member Ross said, you know, a city of our side needs at least two, two dog parks. So, so I think there's some definite interest from the city in doing something about that. Um, the other thing that I learned today was that in fact, um, where, where our current dog park is, that land has now been sold to the tribe. And it's not clear what will happen going forward, that, you know, with, with, uh, land sales to the tribe, it has to be transferred into the trust, which takes time, same as when they bought the casino land. Um, and we don't know what they want to do with that land, but it probably isn't gonna be a temporary dog park, so. Um, that will make this a more pressing issue, because we now have a, a transfer of ownership of that land, uh, and we were only there on sufferance anyway. So I, I think those are important points, that both the sale of that land and the fact that the, the, the two members of the city council seem to be interested in the idea of two different permanent parks. So, um, anyway, that, that was a, a minor update on, on the dog parks. So adding something to the effect of, um, um, under, uh, grant, I, I didn't get your exact wording, John.
Oh, you can say two, 2.5 to 3 million grant-supported, something like.
Oh, supported, okay, yeah. All right. Um, let's move on, uh, pickleball court. And our original idea, or the original idea in the first draft was to, um, somehow change one of the existing courts to pickleball. And it turned out that that, from our discussions last month, that that just was not practical. So, um, this is looking at actually building a, a, a new court.
And, and this is a good segue, and, uh, Deanna's well aware of this. We're having a challenge with one of the tennis courts at Panorama Park, in that the kids are dropping the net, actually vandalizing and dropping the net, so they can play their game in there with the ball. And so, um, we're working through that to try figuring out what the needs of the, uh, area are. So, um, this has happened almost four times now, is that correct, Deanna?
So there's a, there's a key on the nets, so they can wind them down?
No, uh, there's most definitely not, we, we actually lock them, yes, there is, so we can lock them, but what they're doing is cutting the cable and, and that.
So it's really vandalism?
Pushing it aside, and then they're playing their, their ball game in there, like a foosball type of soccer in there.
Right.
So, that's just. So that's just been creeping up. And that's how you determine kind of the needs of the community too as well, so just stating that.
Okay, um, moving on to the basketball, Panorama. So this would turn that into a full court, where we've just got that practice net at the moment.
Correct.
Any, any comments? Now, moving, moving on a page then, John. So this was an idea that came from actually a couple of people in the community. And so we've included it here, um, with, um, an estimate. Um, one member of the community, actually, her son, who is, he lives in Hawaii, um, and he's connected with community skateboards, skateboard parks. And he has a number of lines on grants and other organizations that can help here. So, um, I'm hoping he's going to put me in touch with some local, um, contacts here. Uh, but anyway, um, it was interesting, and I put the note from the, from the city there, from, um, from John, that it is a retention basin. Um, but that top corner there, uh, I'm hoping that we would be able to find a way to use it. I noted that La Quinta has just done exactly this. They are building out their X Park, which is a multi-wheel park. And they note that it's actually built on two retention basins. So, you know, I guess they've been inventive. Mine, theirs is costing 4 million, so that's a little different.
Yeah, and they're, and when they're saying it's built on a retention basin, they have all the underground storage underneath there.
Okay.
Underneath the park in big giant chambers. Uh, La Quinta does that as a matter of practice in all their parks.
So is that a, a complete no? Or is there a way we could plan for some area in Century Park?
There's always above-ground areas, corners that you could put this in. I might add that the one sport I do see out there on the weekends is people are using that baseball diamond, so I wouldn't discount it. Baseball diamond is low maintenance after a flood. Remember in 2014, the water spilled over the park. My worry was someone would go in there and swim and drown. Um, so the, um, we just got to be conscious of that. And I've seen country clubs over the years put tennis courts in retention basins and things like that in one flooding event. And typically ruins them where they have to just reconstruct the whole thing. So I'm real conscious of the fact that a skateboard park is very sophisticated. I'd hate to see it submerged.
So what is, what is the feeling out of the commissioners? Should we include this still or remove it?
Well, if, if they're really serious about the grant, I mean, that, that's, that sounds like something that someone should look into. But as far as without a grant, I, I don't see how that could progress, really.
You're talking about the funding or you're talking about the?
Grants, we got to make sure that it's a hundred percent grant, which is very rare. Otherwise, there's a participation factor that is always a stopping point for the city.
Right.
So if we would like to go ahead with that, uh, Danny, that would have to be added on to our, our budget that you're, that's being pushed forward through for that 550,000?
That's in this, that's in this, um, uh, proposal. We can take it out, but. Any input on it? It's in right now, do we want it in or out?
Well, go ahead, please, Stephen.
I, I'm unclear on this, John. Can, can we put a skateboard park in Century Park without a huge major construction deal? Yes or no?
You can, we, there are corners in the park, you can squeeze skateboard parks anywhere.
Right.
So you can squeeze it in there every, I got to tell you now, skateboard parks are major construction deals, so.
Right, and they're also major city liability deals. Now, so, um, what I'm asking again is you put a note on it. So if it's going to be a hassle to put it in Century Park, I think we should take this out.
Any other comments?
I agree with Stephen.
Yeah, I'm going to have to agree with Stephen as well. Yeah, I, it's like something that we can do without as far as the budgeting.
All right. Uh, so I'll, I'll amend this document, removing the skateboard reference. Um, restroom improvements.
They're needed, yeah.
That, that we're all agreed upon.
Oh, boy.
I, I really love the idea of those skylights. I think that, that's such, that's a great idea, get some light in those rooms.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I've no, I've no idea why, whenever they were built, they were built that way. It's like a prison.
Yeah.
Which is ridiculous. It's airless, no light or anything. Okay, so, so the upgrades will be 120,000. And then, um, Patriot Park, we do have a storage facility. As I understood it from Deanna, the, the storage facility is used for the flags, is that correct?
Yes, it's used, uh, it currently is being used to store the flags for healing fields. But it has the underground, the plumbing. If we, we could turn it back into a, um, working bathroom.
And if, if we did that, so we're, you, you've got an estimate here for 130,000 to do that. Um, does that include all the things that we've discussed for the other upgrades? So more airy, new plumbing, security doors.
More lighting, um, yes, it includes everything you've asked for on the other parks.
Okay.
Danny, I have a question for Deanna. If, if we go back to that original usage of those bathrooms, that would we have a place to store those flags?
Healing fields, um, that's operated by Rotary and they have, um, they've stored them in storage facilities over the years. They have not always utilized that space. They utilized it, they asked to utilize it because the bathroom wasn't working. So they got, so we allowed them to use it for storage. But if we were to turn it back into a bathroom, then they would, um, have to go back to their original storing options.
Uh-huh, okay, good.
So I think our only options, I mean, Patriot Park needs facilities, you know, um, despite the fact that we would like to keep storing the flags for the Rotary. Um, so we either go with an additional build or we go with converting the current build back.
Right.
Um, what is your feeling, which should we go with here in the estimate?
Danny, if they continue to use Patriot Park as they do on special occasions with all the flags, that pretty well negates the use of that building, because there are literally flags every foot. And I question how much usage is there of that park now? Because I drive by it literally every day and I see occasional family picnics, but not a lot of other use, because maybe because there isn't any way you can use.
Well, yeah, it's a, it's a chicken and egg in some ways. And we heard at the last meeting that people have been there and, and realized there were no facilities. Um, I, I think it's almost a duty on, on the city to provide restroom facilities in a public space. And right now, that, that is a public space, but it doesn't have any restrooms. I think, you know, the Rotary, at least my understanding, Deanna, they don't have a contract with us or anything, do they? It's just, we, we've given them that space, um, for free.
Correct, there's no contract.
Yeah, so I know that's unfortunate, but, you know, they could, they could certainly find another storage location, I would think.
But the issue I, I feel with that new facility is that a lot of people, if there is a deed for it, they're going to go to the library or the ballpark if they're open. And that, that gives them a problem in policing that. So, and I'm sure that's happened. If we talk to the library, I'm sure they would admit that's happened during the daytime, when people get desperate, you know, rather than find a tree, they're going to try and get the library.
Right. So I'm trying to get a sense of the, of the feeling of the commission as to what you want to do here. Um, it, it looks like there are really three options. One is to keep the building that's there. The other is to get some additional facility built. And the third is not to do anything.
Well, when we're talking about a, a new facility, we're talking about, uh, that one that is, that's covered in the, in the report here?
Well, the Portalo is just one example of, of the more modern types of facilities that are going into parks across the country. Um, and the, they quote about 96,000 for a, um, for a unit. I don't know if that would hold, you know, in, in our situation in terms of, uh, presume it's going to need a slab or something laid and, uh, and so on, but, but.
The city of La Quinta installed one, it was 120,000 dollars. And remember, this is a one-stall unit.
Right.
How are they maintained? Danny, do you know how they're maintained as far as emptying them? Do you have to have a service come in and do that?
Oh, it, it's, it's not a, it's not a portalo. It's, as I understand, it's, it's actually plumbed, is that?
Yeah, it's, it's called Portland Lou, because the city of Portland engaged someone to kind of develop this. And they placed them around their cities. And what they are is, you can, you could technically visibly see that someone's in there and it's somewhat self-cleaning, uh, and it's pretty much indestructible other than paint vandal, vandalism.
You know, they're, they're good in terms of, um, people can't hang around in them, um, less vandalism and so on. Um, that, that, it's a more modern approach than the old brick buildings that we used to have for, for toilets. But you're right, they're, they're a single-stall use. It's not uncommon in public spaces now that you see these, um, single stalls.
So John, did you feel like it's plumbing to the sewer, is, is that a big project to do that?
Yeah, it's, it's quite expensive, not in the hard cost, but in the soft cost that you have to pay the, um.
With that cover, like, like what you mentioned, 120,000, you think?
Right. Mr. Chairman, if I may, at this point, I would move that we just keep the flags there and let this go. I have been at Patriot Park, I agree with the other commissioners' comments. There are not a lot of people using it. And also, people will walk the 100 yards to go to the library. That's obviously happens a lot. If you look at the Riverside County library hours, except for Friday when the library's closed, they pretty much cover, most of the time, people would be at that park. And it, I have used the park, I do know where he's storing the facilities. But at this point, I think the other parks and the other restroom things are more important than a park that is really not used that much. That's how I look at it.
I, I also agree with Commissioner Veriker on that.
Well, I see three in agreement, in which case I'll remove the restroom for, um, for Patriot Park. Um, similar situation for Town Square, uh, festival lawn area, in that there are no outdoor facilities for anybody, any families using that area. Um, there are new restrooms, of course, in the amphitheater. Um, but the amphitheater will at times be, um, unavailable. It will be locked at night and it may be out of bounds during performances and shows and so on. Comments on that one?
I think, I think myself, this is perfect. Um, I mean, this, this is going to be the showpiece of the city. And we can't have people bringing kids there and all of a sudden, when do we go to the bathroom? You know, I mean, we could ask maybe CV rep and some of the other places if they'll let us use it. But I applaud you guys for this. I think we definitely need to make sure we have as many facilities as possible. If you ever go to the Redlands Bowl at Redlands, they do a good job of that as well. So, um, I, I think this is a really good idea.
John, um, do you want to comment on the estimate? Because you were just saying it's typically 100, or La Quinta was paying 120,000 for one? We're proposing two.
They installed one with their new little, um, or their new, uh, roundabout parkway system they, um, put in recently. Um, this estimate, we had looked at this before, where we had actually put some, uh, prefab restrooms, which is the only way to buy restrooms now, by the way. Prefab restrooms against the parking garage in that kind of landscaped area. Uh, just, it was, you're facing the garage just left of the, or right of the entrance. Uh, I actually think that's probably a little low for a prefab that may have four stalls, but it's a start. In the, in this location, I wouldn't put necessarily Portland Lou's, because I don't think you get your bang for your buck when you do, uh, something like a bank of restrooms. And they, it probably, we might be in line here on this estimate, because we're only talking restrooms, no concession stand or anything like that.
Okay. So we got on that number?
Yes, that'll work.
All right, that actually is the, uh, last item in the list. The rest is a summary, and I can adjust the, uh, the arithmetic here to make sure it's all correct. So with those amendments, and let me, uh, let me just review, I'm, let's see here, under deferred maintenance, um, just making a note that the signs will be bilingual. And, uh, dog park, um, item B, making a note that it will be grant-supported. Um, deleting the skateboard entry, deleting the, um, restroom facilities for, um, Patriot Park. Um, yeah, those are the only amendments. Um, so I, I just get everyone's agreement, um, on sending that amended document then forward to the city. So, um, I guess we can do it as a motion, so.
Well, if I can suggest something, Mr. Chairman, and, you know, we're, Deanna and I are always working to make this presentable the best way it can. Right now, what you see on the screen is your estimate, and that's a daunting number. That's, that's the kind of number I need for repaving, uh, just on a, on a annual, that's short of what I need on an annual basis, but that's like two years of my paving budget. Since you, your biggest number in there that drives up this daunting number is the dog park permanent. And if there's any way to take that out of the equation as something that's going to be, um, grant-assisted, grant-paid-for, grant-assisted, it gets your number down to a number that's not going to be kind of looked at and say, wow, that's, that's just out of way. Uh, that's just way too big. So if you took that number out of there, it starts becoming a little more palatable. And each item becomes a little more intriguing as to be able to look at and say, okay, there's a possibility here, here.
Well, I can, I mean, I can break the dog park permanent line out and show it as an asterisked item, as a, a grant, as a, a grant. as an asterisked item, as a, a grant, a, a grant-supported item. Um, I still need to show it in the, in the final report here because, you know, we are asking them to, to, um, approve that as a project. So I can do that. Yeah.
Yeah, and then Danny, we can put it on the budget or on the agenda for consideration. Cause I think there are possible other solutions.
Actually, you know, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you did that and we also got rid of the five fifty, the budget comes under a million dollars. Okay? The five fifty for the skateboard part. So if that disappears, that's three and a half million off of that. So the budget estimates now come down to seven seventy-five as opposed to four million, two seventy-five. A more palatable number, I would assume, to the city council.
Yeah, the skate park number's out and the restroom number's going to come down because we got rid of Patriot Park. So all those numbers are going to shift. Um, I will redo that, that part. And with those amendments, um, I'd ask for the commission's approval to forward the amended document uh, to the city for consideration at their, uh, budget, at their, um, uh, goal planning, uh, meetings at the end of January.
Can you move?
Great. Anyone second?
I'll second.
Okay. And we'll do that as a roll call.
Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
Commissioner Veriker?
Aye.
Commissioner Yarborough?
Yes.
Vice Chair Marshall?
Yes.
Chairman Lee?
Yes. All right. Uh, moving on to, uh, the dates and deadline calendar. Is that John?
Yes, sir. And I have the calendar on the screen. I'll make it so we can see the whole year. And on there, just to let you know, and I'll, I'll make the calendar bigger again, but there are key colors down at the bottom that are needed to be adhered to, to be able to produce the agenda in a timely manner. So just to let you know, we're pretty much on schedule after this meeting. Um, this year, Labor, uh, Memorial Day happens on the, uh, fifth Friday of the month, so we're good there. And in September, uh, we're good there as well. The one thing the staff always ask is either June, July, we go dark. Just because of catch-up staffing, um, in that area there. Uh, so that's at the pleasure of the, uh, commission. So with that, what we're asking you to do is, uh, make a motion accepting that with the caveat that June or July will, there will be a decision on which one to go dark at, if we may.
I think that's fine, John. I, I, I wonder about December. Do we think there's any chance that we'd be meeting on the twenty-seventh?
No, and we may just officially eliminate that too. If you do that, that makes a whole lot of sense, Mr. Chairman, because staffing around the city since we're on such low, um, we have such limited staff, they take that opportunity because they know contractors and developers and everyone else is not.
I thi- I think what I would suggest is not scheduling the twenty-seventh of December because I'm, I'm almost certain that the commission will drop it when we get there. And instead just leave it open that there could be an emergency or a special meeting called in December if there was an urgent issue.
Okay, Christina, so if you can eliminate that and then we'll just leave the June or July open depending on how busy the calendar is on which one we'd go dark at.
Right.
And then sometimes I request, just to let you know, uh, we'll be requesting it because sometimes our vacations get staggered where uh, and it's the beginning of the summer that we don't have coverage, so.
Right.
Just know that.
Okay. Um, thank you very much. I, I find this invaluable, so I do keep this, uh, available. It used to be a nightmare trying to figure out when I had to get paperwork to Christina and Deanna and this now keeps me on track. It's still a nightmare getting the paperwork, but it's, at least I have a piece of paper that tells me when I should be having the nightmares.
So if we can have consensus from the commission on this, we can, we'll lock that in.
Great.
Move approval.
Any opposition to this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there you go. I think we have, we have consensus.
Okay, the next item. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm a item number five. I have no new updates to present. I was dealing with very limited staffing and I won't go into reasons why during the last two months. So we're going to make our best effort to come out with, um, more information at our next meeting. So I, I bid for your apology, but staffing was just challenged during these COVID times.
So moving to staff comments.
I don't have any, John.
Uh, yes. Um, Desert Recreation District update, just to let you know. I did get word that we are looking at two thousand twenty-two to put that on the, ballot. We're going to ask the Parks and Community Events and I think Danny and Fergus are already on that subcommittee to assist in getting that information out. Uh, obviously we're going to wait till after the uh, direction that comes out of the planning retreat from the city council, if that's even discussed, but I'm, I'm sure it will. So that may in addition temper some of your wish lists that goes in there. So I just wanted to give you that update. It's not dead on the vine. It's actually just waiting for the appropriate time to come back out. And it seemed like there was a good appetite for it, but COVID cut that short. Any questions related to that?
I do have a question to that. Is, um, is this going to be held in, um, to coincide with the council elections in twenty twenty-two?
Usually, yeah, it usually fall with any major elections in the fall, yes.
I'm just going to interrupt for a second because I realize I forgot to ask and Christina can tell me, were there any public comments on the previous item?
There were none, Chairman. I would have let you know.
All right, thank you. I just looked at my notes here and it says ask, so I did.
Commissioner Yarborough, did I answer your question?
Uh, yes, thank you so much.
Okay.
All right.
Uh, Parks Regulation Regarding Dogs in Parks. I am going to city council next week on a brief study session item. See if they have any comments on us proceeding and allowing me to remember the city attorney works for them. Allowing me to utilize the city attorney to, uh, edit the municipal code to be able to allow dogs with leashes in parks. And then also I'll, I'll mention the fact there is some budget constraints with it, which is the appropriate time right now for us to get that in. And the budget being for bags and things like that and continual maintenance of thereof. Any questions relating to that?
Um, I, I, I just have a comment. Is that, um, e- even, even if we put up a sign that says dogs are allowed on leashes in the park, people are still going to let their dogs run and play ball with them in our parks. I, so it's, it's just a comment.
I understand it's like a no smoking in the park sign and it's, it's as much enforcement as you can. Hopefully people get the idea we see in a lot of areas where people take care of things and are doing the right thing by example. Uh, people kind of get shamed into doing the right thing sometimes.
Yeah, I think, but when the, when the rules are reasonable, and I think this one would be reasonable, then it's more likely that, that, the other users of the park are willing to challenge misuse, so. So you get a little bit more self-regulation. Sorry.
I don't know if he's ever been over to the Palm Desert Dog Park, but some days it looks like WWE wrestling. So, uh, I agree that we could just encourage them, but I think the commissioner is right and that, that's really the only thing we could do, you know? Nothing else, really.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you, we don't, if you don't try, you don't know, and then we can adjust accordingly.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, and then the next item, uh, at your pleasure, Mr. Chairman. I think this is kind of for Commissioner Veriker to give us an update because we were very curious on if there's been any progress on that media outreach.
Uh, well, we have the fifteen minutes. Whoever wants to do it a month, uh, that's what I was told. Um, as soon as we get a, again, a lot of this is COVID-related as well because we're not doing anything, but as soon as we get going with the, uh, amphitheater, we'll be able to do with that. I've also interacted with CV rep and their new director. Uh, they just named the executive director. They will the next couple of days. And so, yeah, there's things to do, but really basically whoever wants to be a TV star, uh, Mr. Porman said, just contact them and we can get fifteen minutes a month on, uh, channel sixteen. And I would help in writing. I have a face made for radio, which was my career for twenty-five years. But I'll help write anything that anybody would want to do if we could get someone who wants to be on TV. You know? Or maybe we could have something fun where we could do a little walking tour of the park and film that.
I like that idea.
You know, somebody could walk through Panorama Park and, you know, just say, hey, here's what we got going on. We have the, uh, John Memorial Bridge coming up. I don't know, something like that, you know, we could make it fun and show people the various parks.
Yeah, that should be good.
You know? If somebody wants to do it, uh, I'll, I'll film it or I'll figure out how to film it and I'll talk to Chris about it. But he did give us that time, so I think it'd be kind of fun.
Give me a call, Stephen, and I'll work with you. I have my own show on CBS.
Okay, alrighty, great. Okay, Fergus, yeah, Fergus and I will handle that. We'll work together on that.
Okay, good.
Then whoever wants, Chairman Lee, if you want to be on it or if some, you have a, you could be like the Patrick Stewart guy on it, but you know, you have the accent for it, so, uh, but if we could just do something, walk through the parks and show people, it'd be kind of nice, actually. You know? It'd be interesting.
What the feldnails.
We could buy you a hamburger. That'll be your, I'll take you to Wiener Schnitzel on Ramone Road for your, uh, salary fee.
All right. Um, anything further? Staff comments?
I don't have anything. Deanna, do you have anything? That's a no.
Okay, Commissioner reports. Um, I'll go around my screen in the order it, it is. Um, Commissioner Marshall?
I have really nothing to report with the way things are stopped right now, but hopefully we'll get something going soon.
Okay.
It's really nice to see that budget go through, or yeah, if it does go through, it'd be really nice to see that. There's some numbers we can really work with.
Right. Commissioner Ma- uh, Commissioner Yabra?
I have no, uh, comments.
Any, any meetings or activities this last month?
Uh, I did briefly, um, uh, no, nothing, nothing to report for this month.
Okay. Um, Commissioners, Veri- Veriker?
Uh, the only thing, I, I apologize to Commissioner Yarborough. I called him on the wrong day. Uh, we were going to discuss some trail information and I'll, I'll get back to him on that, uh, but that was my fault. And he was very gracious, but it was, I had my schedule mixed up. So now that I have the new schedule from tonight, I'm ready to go. So that's all I have to report.
Commissioner Curry?
I think with the casino in place and considering it's COVID time, the city is going to face a major parking problem. If you have looked at the restaurants that can be open even part-time, there is a great deal of parking. So I think as we look at problems and look at how we're going to use predicted amphitheater, we may be a su- success without even knowing.
Okay. So, uh, comments from me, um, really they've all been involved in this meeting. So the budget work, um, the, uh, work on the, dog parks and so on. And otherwise, I think that was it. Um, the next Parks and Community Events Commission meeting will be held on February the twenty-second. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I was remiss. I didn't ask Christina if she had any comments or chewouts for the commission. Sorry, Christina.
I have none.
I won't forget you next time. I feel very bad.
She wouldn't share them now, even if you asked her, so. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.